Good evening and welcome to the February 15, 2023, meeting of the Roseville City Council. I'll ask the clerk to read the role, call the role.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bernice Kony.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Here.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Thank you. I'd like to ask veteran, Coast Guard veteran Robert Elster to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your service. And ask the clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 15 City of Roseville Regular City Council meeting. If you're present here tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, please feel free to grab one from the staff table over to your left. I'm sorry, yes, to your left. As a reminder, the Brown Act does prohibit our city council from taking action or discussing items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For public comment, each speaker will be provided with three minutes on items that are not on the agenda. The maximum allotted time for this public comment is 25 minutes. Speakers that would like to comment on the agendized items will have five minutes to express their comments. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if you address the city council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. And again, thank you for being here and your specific participation. Welcome to the city of Roseville.
Thank you very much, Carmen. Now we'll go to presentations, and I have a distinct pleasure and honor on behalf of the city council to recognize someone who has given to our community and our state years, decades of service. Senator Nielsen, would you meet me at the podium? We've got the family and the family that helped you in all those years, right?
That's the one.
That's the one.
No, Bruce, I'm fine right here. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you know, all of those folks up there, including myself, know that he doesn't serve without you.
Amen.
So I'm gonna put that down there. And you know why it's a distinct pleasure, Senator, is, you know, I was looking at my office today, I work for Northern California Water Association, and about a year ago, we usually have an annual meeting the first Friday in March. There was something going around, and we had to be virtual. But we still recognized you for your service back then. And I found that resolution that we did, the NACWA Board of Directors, and I was thinking, how appropriate is it that you're here tonight? So thank you very much.
And that's proudly framed in our home.
Oh, well, we'll let David Guy and Todd Manley and the team know that. So I'm gonna do this quickly. You know, most of you may know this, but Senator Nielsen was raised in the San Joaquin, where he graduated from Fresno State. That's a bulldog, right?
Bulldogs.
All right, there you go. With a bachelor's degree in ag business. We like Chico State and the SAC Valley.
Well, I've represented Chico forever, so I'm on their team, too.
In 1967, and after college, he worked as a farmer by trade and farmed the east and the west side, very different sides of the San Joaquin Valley, the Delta and my beloved Sacramento Valley. He operated the family's dairy cattle ranch and farmed 15 types of field and row crops. These looked to my ears probably not when there was an irrigated lands program, though.
Oh, well, that's a whole nother story.
Whereas in 1974 and '75, Senator Nielsen participated in ag leadership. Which class were you, sir?
Fifty-one. We are now in fifty-four, I think, on the origins.
Class five.
Class five.
Yeah, because I knew fifty-one was, yeah. And where was your trip to, though?
We went to Egypt, India, Pakistan, Israel, and Italy.
That's the great thing about ag leadership. And you were in there for two-year leadership training along with 30 other agricultures from across the straight state. Shortly after that, you became the first fellow elected to the California Legislature. Whereas Senator Nielsen began his political career in 1978 and served three terms in the California State Senate, Senate, can't read tonight, Senator.
That's okay.
I have to practice my reading. He became known as a champion for farmers and ranchers as a leader of education, public safety, and water rights issues. He was the Senate Republican Leader from '83 to '87 and the youngest Republican Leader ever selected. And whereas Senator Jim Nielsen authored legislation to kickstart California's 1987 master plan update for higher education, he served on an 18-member bipartisan joint committee that produced a trailblazing 138-page report. Kind of a short report in these days, right?
But an important and landmark report is still around.
The effort resulted in aligning and clarifying roles of the community college, state university, and UC systems and establishing the community college system as a full partner by statute, thereby defining their vocational and transitional mission. And whereas, after leaving the California State Senate in 1990, he served on the Agricultural Labor Relations Board in 1992, was appointed to the Board of Parole and Prison Terms, where he served as Chair from 1993 to 2000 before leaving in 2007. And whereas Senator Jim Nielsen was elected to the California State Assembly in 2008, now this is when you did your real work, right? You did a lot of work before, but now this is the work that resonates with me, where he represented the Second District in Butte, Calusa, Glen, Modoc, Shasta, Siskiyou, Sutter, Tahima, and Yolo Counties from 2009 to 2012. And whereas Senator Nielsen has represented the city of Roseville, which is dear to our heart, in California's Fourth District with great distinction since 2013. And whereas in 2014, Senator Nielsen backed, gosh, this resonates with me, too, backed the Water Quality, Supply, and Infrastructure Improvement Act of 2014, otherwise known as Prop One, the first statewide water project of this magnitude since the Orville Dam. And the act authorized $7.5 billion to fund ecosystem and watershed protection and restoration. Just can't build a dam without the other stuff, right?
You've got to have it.
And water supply infrastructures, including surface and groundwater storage, drinking water protection, and is positioned to jumpstart construction that new and desperately needed in this decade's sites reservoir.
Yeah, yeah.
Whereas Senator Nielsen is considered a strong fiscal conservative that resonates with us all, an expert of fiscal policy, and was named the lead Republican on the state budget issues. He provided his expertise in effective governance as a commissioner on the Little Hoover Commission to investigate state government operations and policies. And whereas Senator Jim Nielsen has been deeply attuned to the city of Roseville's concerns and priorities and has actively helped to support them, and his devotion to leadership on behalf of the residents of the city of Roseville and Placer County should be commended and now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Roseville, that Senator Jim Nielsen be commended for his more than 44 years of remarkable service and dedication to the people of California and for his 10 years of unouering service to the support of the city of Roseville. And we congratulate Senator Nielsen for all his accomplishments and know he has begun a long and healthy and joyous retirement.
Hallelujah.
Is he really retired? Anyway, thank you, Senator Nielsen.
My honor.
And then I'm sure, can we get a group picture up here? That would be good, right?
Sure.
You want to come down? Yeah, they'll come down. They're younger than you, aren't they?
I would love to have a picture with your council.
Want to join in, though? There's a guy in the audience. I'm trying to tease up here. Have a little time with Mark Valinsky.
A fellow named Mark. And may we solicit Megan. Shide, I have a story about her.
Well, we have a rule here since I became mayor, there is no story time.
Okay.
Yeah, so come this way, this way. And Megan, the senator wants you to pay out.
I'll just get you up.
This guy wandered in. Mark, come on, Mark.
Mark, come on.
Okay, one, two, three, two, one, one, two, three.
And for those of you who don't know, Landon Wolf was, was he your district representative?
Yep. And Cassim John Lapikoff has now taken over along with Christine, and they're heading the office. Senator Nero has maintained the office here, the same office.
Can we get you to the microphone, Senator? You're not shy about microphones, are you?
No, I've had lots of them shoved in my face, sometimes down my throat. It is a real honor, and I must confess, getting a little misty-eyed as you began to acknowledge my efforts. You know, I was a young farmer, and I realized that most of what affected my ability to produce and profit as a farmer was government, not weather or pests, other things. And I said, well, Jim, what are you doing about it? And they said, well, I vote. What else? I had no answer. And I felt bad about that, and I decided that I needed to do more. That course took me many different directions. In fact, over the decades, I've represented 19 different California counties. Nobody's even close to that. I guess all that means that I'm a person who knows a lot of California. And I've had, obviously, an equal high number of cities that I've been able to represent. My hardest tenure, most stressful years were the chairman of the Board of Parole hearings. That's the toughest job in California, folks, and I won't even bore you with the details about that. But it's always been a pleasure when I, in one of the five redistrictings I've survived, to include this area and represent this county and have this be our district number-one office in Roseville. And work with all of you and many of your predecessors. People don't really appreciate the pressures and the burdens of elective office. I've coined a term for it. I call it the splendid loneliness of leadership. Few know the burdens that you endure and suffer. But even fewer probably know the significance of the efforts that you have put forth on their behalf. Among the many accomplishments of my career, obviously, water has been a high priority. And I labored mightily for decades to convince policymakers and the people of this state that we could not survive into the future with energy or water without additional capacity. And we finally achieved it. And I want to thank you particularly. This county coming on board early in support of Proposition One was significant in developing the momentum around the state that gained us well over a 60% yes vote on apportioning that money. That money was to be allocated to at least two major projects. Unfortunately, the second project could never get its act together. But the one that you supported, SITES, did. Their joint powers authority did a magnificent job, and they're moving ahead. And I think I can in good conscience convey to you tonight, there will be a ground opening of SITES Reservoir. And in a reasonable period of time, a groundbreaking. I do want to see that in my lifetime, and so I'm going to pray God gives me more years to live. But that is significant beyond its import to one community, but to the state of California and in addition to that, the people of this state, and most importantly, our grandchildren. For there will be hope for them, that there will be supplies of water available in their future. I remember the long hours of negotiation, and I even had some arguments with my own industry, agriculture. Governor Brown made a deal with them for a lesser amount to be apportioned in the bond. They came to me and said, our board voted, and we want you to support the governor's $2 billion obligation. I said, no, I will oppose it. But you're Ag's guy. Why would you not support that? Because that gives us, at best, an opportunity for one reservoir. We need much more than that, including infrastructure for our water supplies. That would be an example, ladies and gentlemen of the council, of that splendid loneliness of leadership. And I know how you have to endure that. And I know the hours that you put in on your work behalf of Roseville. And I certainly know the standing and status and stature of this community and all the cities in California. You surely are one of the best governed. And I speak with authority since I represent a goodly number of those cities and had to deal with a lot of them that would dispose to seem to fight with each other. But now, as I ride off into the sunrises, I put it, the time is to devote to my wife. She and I have really lived very Renaissance lives and done many things. And I don't think that we've sacrificed much for our marriage, but now we can solely focus on each other. So when people have been asking me, what are my plans for the future, I'd just say, spend more time with Marilyn. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, you are more than just people that I represent. You are personal friends, enduring friends, and I pledge in whatever capacity you may be at the time, if you need help, Jim Nielsen will be there for you. Thank you for allowing me to be with you here tonight.
Thank you, Senator, very much. Any of my colleagues in the council want to make any very brief comments?
I'll say, when I was first elected, I got to go out to the SITES Reservoir project. And I was so impressed with you, because I hadn't met you before. And you did just a great job of welcoming me and explaining the process and some of the battles that you had gone through and we were going through. And I just want to say, from the city of Roseville's perspective, thank you for continuing that fight, because it's nice to, and you mentioned it earlier when we were chatting, that it kind of went dormant for a little while and was getting frustrating. And now it seems like it's actually a real project that's really going to happen. And I know you had a lot of leadership on that. I think that's the biggest thing that's going to benefit us down the road, and really do appreciate that. And thanks for helping us along there.
Vice Mayor Bernice Kony.
Senator, I've known you for many years, and not one instance goes by an interaction that we've had together where I am not left being reminded of that you are a man of integrity and honor and high standards. And as a Roseville resident and a native of this region, we are much better because of your service, and you will be sorely missed. And we just appreciate you very much. Thank you for being here tonight, and all the best to you in Maryland.
Councilwoman Rakuchi.
Senator, I've really enjoyed your open-door policy. You were always there for us, our community, our region. We've come to you on a lot of water and electric issues. And I would echo something Councilmember Albert said. I had the opportunity to see the SITES Reservoir area and work with NACWA and looking to the future of SITES and other ways that we're making sure our grandchildren and children after that will have water and have a place to have Roseville and Placer County and actually California be home with water. And all of that, I'd say, started with people like you. And if it weren't people like you who were there and made a difference. And I really appreciate what you've done, and I thank you for what you've done. And I think your plans afterwards with Marilyn sound great, so keep up the good work.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Senator, I've known you for many years, and I have to say that I've always thought highly of you, because you always spoke up even when it was not popular to do so. And I think Roger has some very big shoes to fill. So I wish you well on your retirement and hope to see you around when you're finished spending more time at home.
Senator, they've said it all. Thank you very much for your service.
One more thing, if I may.
Okay, one more thing, and then I might have to put you on the timer here, though.
Well, you know, a politician seldom gives up the microphone. But in this case, I did not mention something that's been a profound connection between you and me.
Do you want to come to the microphone? Want to make sure we get this for posterity?
Well, it is an additional and very special aside. I don't call it a story. It's much more significant than a story. But one of the many counties I represented over the decades was Sonoma. And nearly, Sonoma, for many decades, hosted the California Junior Miss Pageant. And I, being the senator guy, became the Burt Parks of that junior miss. And one year, a young lady named Megan, now Shide, I believe then Range, was named California's Junior Miss.
What?
And I remember being the Burt Parks of the evening, walking her down this large corridor, smiling at each other as Megan was named California's Junior Miss. Now, we kind of stayed in touch, but much more so over the years as she relocated here and established her roots and then became a part of your community, a significant part. I bring that up not just as a story, but as a significance, significance about relationships. And through her, got acquainted with, obviously, the council and certainly Mark Valinsky, the magnificent liaison to you and the state of California. And it's all part of the reason why you have been such a well-governed city and how much I appreciate each of you and our enduring friendship. Thanks for the second bat at the...
That was more than worth it. Thank you, Senator. Marilyn, enjoy your time with him. I know you made many sacrifices along the way, so thank you all. We will now go to public comment and ask clerk to announce the, announce the, announce the public comment. Oh, I can announce it.
Well, at this time, we do have two individuals who submitted yellow cards to speak. Is there anyone else in the public? Once we call these individuals, you can step up to the podium. So you want to start off with the first one?
Yeah, so this is the time on the agenda when we take public comment on non-agenda items. So I'll ask Robert Elster to come forward.
Thank you very much. Senator Nielsen, I just got to do this. This is native of Roseville. Thank you so much for representing me, the quality of years that you have. What a gift you gave. What an honor. Thank you very, very much. I couldn't pass that up at all. Since we're into, you know, old type of stuff, I want to also say that I feel like I'm following in my father's...
Come a little closer to the microphone, so everybody at home can hear you.
I hope. I feel like I'm following in my father's footsteps. He was a Korean vet and a radar man. His name is Robert Elster. Funny that. I'm his junior, and he is posthumously named on the Mayadu Library, and his name is of the Korean... the Korean veterans of Roseville. I really feel like incredible. And speaking about Old Homes Week as well, this kind of reminded me of a social studies teacher that I had at Oakmont High School. His name was Baron Reed, and he also was the mayor of Roseville. And a good friend of Pauline Rukucci's, who evidently brought her into this wonderful fold called the Roseville City Council. I also want to thank the Placer Veterans Stand Down, of which who I represent as their ambassador. The reason why they selected me as an ambassador, because I was one of the few veterans that went homeless. I went homeless in the San Francisco Bay Area in Santa Clara, and then I came back up here to my hometown, where Cindy Euler helped me out tremendously. And as you can see, I have roots here in Roseville. I was born in Roseville Community Hospital, when it was a seven-bed emergency room at 315 Oak Ridge Drive, Roseville, California. So that I'm very proud of. But I'm also very proud of what this group does. This group helps homeless veterans get into housing. This group also helps get people what they're hearing, if they have hearing impaired issues, also new clothing and old clothing as well. But the main thing that we concentrate on is medical, eye services, and dental. And I'm working on mine. So I really am exceedingly grateful for the Placer Veterans Stand Down, and especially for my great IT guy, because I really appreciate him, and that was Ben Bartholomew. Ben is an incredible guy. And so, as you could see, I love my Placer Veterans Stand Down, and I love all that it has done for me. And I appreciate my city council family that I'm staring at right now. What a great benefit you've all been to my life. And come on down to the Placer Veterans Stand Down. We're at the grounds this year. It's going to be great, guys, and I'm really looking forward to it. And so I bid you afawadu. Enjoy the rest of your evening, and seppa paratus.
All right, and so Stand Down is May 9th through the 11th?
Yes.
And they'll open at... The gates will open at 8:00 AM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your service and your continued service.
Thank you.
Did I put the proper emphasis on the first syllable?
Bellucci.
Bellucci.
And I don't hear it correctly very often, so thank you.
When you're out of show, you try.
So I guess, excuse me, getting over a cold. I think it's a bit apropos that I'm up here to talk about an issue in our neighborhood that's getting worse and worse. And first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and council members for listening to me this evening.
Oh, absolutely.
I find that I'm recently retired, that I have less and less free time than I did when I was working. So I intended to take some pictures and put them on some kind of slideshow to have this evening. I was not able to do so. I do have some pictures. If you'd like to see them, they're on my phone. I'd be happy to share them with you. But I'm here to talk about the worsening homeless encampments that are popping up around Roseville, particularly by my home, which is... I live at 26 Garden Park Court, which is near Roseville, the intersection of Roseville Parkway and Washington Boulevard.
I think we're neighbors.
Then you're aware of the Topgolf and all the infrastructure that's gone in there. The Walmart, at one time, the site of what is now Walmart, was zoned light industrial. As I understand it, the city changed zoning over the years, which allowed Walmart and other commercial enterprises to build there. And with them, they've brought some problems. I emphasize with the homeless, as a matter of fact, before I retired, I contacted the disabled American veterans to see if there's anything I can do to help them on a volunteer basis, to help particularly with homeless people. So maybe I can reach out to the gentleman that just spoke and get some input from him. I was here before the council, about 10, 15 years ago, to talk about the problem of vandalism and pollution or waste around the neighborhood. It's gotten significantly worse. And in the last, I would say, in the last two months, the homeless problems have gotten worse. I have a lot of empathy for the folks, but they are creating, you know, obvious problems. There, I find hypodermic needles, empty alcohol in beer bottles. In the last couple of months, there have been... The homeless encampment has grown from one or two people to at least a half a dozen. I've had to call the police and the fire department on several occasions, as have some of my neighbors. Two of them wanted to be here this evening. One got held up at work. The other one is out of town on business unexpectedly. So it's a big waste of city's resources to have to have the fire department and the police respond. The homeless folks are currently living on the wall, on top of the wall, near the Walmart. They throw their trash down there. I've requested in the past that Walmart help police the area, and in the 23 years that I've been there, 24 years, I've seen Walmart folks out there maybe three or four times. I don't think that's adequate. I was told by, twice, by the police department that state law will not allow police personnel to get the folks off the property, that state law supersedes any city or county law. I think that, and I understand that. I think, however, that the property up to the wall is the property of Walmart, and so as private property, we should be able to enforce that. The rest of the property is supposed to be protected wetlands, and it's supposed to protect endangered species that live in the vernal pools, and the trash, and then hypodermic needles, and the... There's chairs out there. There are pallets that people are living on. There's a couch, there's tarps, there's all sorts of stuff. It's not helping the...
I don't want to cut you off. I saw it on my walk recently. Like I said, I live in the neighborhood, so if...
Dion can do it.
Dion, we'll have our assistant city manager, and we also have a call-in number or a number on the website you can go to report.
Oh, I have, many times.
Okay, if you would see our assistant city manager, Dion Louth, and he can help you with it.
Perfect.
The challenge is it can't take issue, because it's not an agendized item. So that's why, it's not just pushing you off.
Understood.
We get your information, certainly help you, and at least share what we're doing and what else we can do.
That would be great. And like I said, I think because the land is either privately owned or it is protected wetlands, you all know how stringent NEPA and SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act in particular, is you can't build a project in the state without following NEPA and SEQA guidelines. So I would think it would be a pretty easy fix to get the folks off of there. I'll try and finish up real quick. I do think, again, that Walmart has some responsibility. They wanted to come into our neighborhood to make some money. I think they are obligated to, you know, maintain the area to some degree. I believe the city has responsibility as well. Again, it's a waste of my... My wife and I have been here for 24 years. We feel very privileged to be residents of Roseville. We've raised two children here. We wouldn't have wanted to do it anywhere else. And in 24 years, things are starting to go downhill, and at this point, it's just not acceptable. So I'm hoping... And as a retired person, I've offered this in the past. I'll do anything I can within reason to help you resolve the issue. If you need, you know, if you need some volunteer work, I'm happy to do that. I've got the time now.
So Mr. Bellucci, one thing I know about Dion, he takes copious notes, so if you would meet him, he'll capture all of this. And I know I ran into Rockland City Councilmember Bill Halden yesterday, and he told me about it, and I said, "Yep, I'm aware of it." So I'd ask you just, you know...
Out there.
Dion.
Oh, we'll talk outside.
We'll talk outside.
That's all I got. Thank you very much for your time.
No, thank you.
I appreciate it, and I hope we can resolve the issue.
All right, thank you.
And I'd like, if we do, well, regardless of whether or not there's some improvement made in this area, I'd love to report back to you if you're willing to hear me again. But thank you for your time. I know everybody's very busy.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Is there anyone else who has public comment on a non-agenda item? All right, if not, we'll move on to the consent calendar, and I'll ask the clerk to announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So all matters on consent calendar tonight are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council, the staff, or a member of the public wishes to pull an item for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. Is there anyone in the public who would like to have an item pulled for further discussion tonight? Mr. Mayor, seeing no one else, we have before you tonight Item 7.1 through 7.20 for approval tonight. If I can have a motion to approve those items, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. I'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rukucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishelt.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we'll go to our ordinances and Item 8.1, Regional Transportation Funding and Finance Plan for South Placer and South Sutter Region, a Memorandum of Understanding, Amendment, and Funding Agreement and Budget Adjustment. And we have our Public Works Director, Jason Shikowski, with us. Thank you, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor Haldishelt, members of the council. As Bruce said, Mayor Haldishelt said, "My name is Jason Shikowski, and I'm the Public Works Director." And I'm excited to share with you tonight this request to approve the next step in a planning process that I've been involved with for a few years, but has been a topic of discussion for much longer. Should you approve this item tonight, staff will team with our regional partners to develop a plan for your future review of a potential long-term joint South Placer-South Sutter regional transportation system. So the South Placer region, including Roseville, has been and continues to be an attractive location for new friends and neighbors to come and live. Our regional partner to the West Sutter County is now starting to see a lot of interest for new neighborhoods, shops, and places to work in their South County area as well. While it may take decades to occur, it is likely that South Placer and Sutter County residents will become next-door neighbors. At some point in the future, our communities will become more connected. All of our new friends will need to get from place to place in a community where jurisdictional lines are hard to define. They may live in South Sutter County and work or shop in Roseville or South Placer County, and the opposite may as well be true. The challenge we are facing is how to help these future neighbors to continue to be able to move freely throughout this new regional community. The solution will require many transportation improvements, including more buses, bike trails, walkable communities, and roads. The item before you tonight is mostly about the roads. This map shows major regional connections we will need to construct or improve in order for a future connected community to be successful. Just going over the map quickly, the bottom horizontal line, that's Baseline Riego Road, we need that to be six lanes from Fittimit out to Highway 99, and four lanes from Fittimit to Foothills. The top horizontal line, somewhat horizontal line, is Placer Parkway, which is a future four-lane expressway with limited access, running from Highway 65 to Highway 99. We also have Santucci Boulevard, the north-south-up-down road to the right, which is a multi-lane collector connecting Baseline and Placer Parkway. And we have a north-south road off to the left-hand side, which is Highway 99, which will need some improvements. Now, roads are expensive. Combined, these improvements are estimated to cost just under $1 billion. Luckily, we don't need all those improvements right now, but we do need to start planning for them and funding them. If we begin now collecting a little bit of money as the community grows, someday we will be able to afford all of the road improvements future generations will use to get from place to place. That's what this Regional Transportation Funding and Financing Plan Memorandum of Understanding is all about. Council originally authorized Task 1 of the memorandum back in 2021. Task 1 was for a team of community builders, agency staff, and council and county board representatives who got together to explore and discuss various regional transportation funding options. After numerous meetings and discussions, we are now ready to move on to Task 2 and hire a consultant to take a more detailed look at the scope of needed future road improvements, what they will cost, and how much each community will use of each of these road improvements. This will help us to know how much each new community should contribute towards the regional roads needed to allow future generations to continue to enjoy the great quality of life we enjoy today. For those in the audience that may not be familiar with the community building process, the fees that I'm talking about are gradually collected from builders as they construct new areas of the city or the county. These fees are used to help fund much of our transportation infrastructure necessary to accommodate our changing needs. While these fees are a very important part of the funding plan for our roadways, this task will also look at other funding options available, including alternatives like state and federal grants. Once the same team I discussed earlier is satisfied they have found what they believe to be the best solution, we will return to our respective council or boards for authorization to implement the solution. Tonight's Task 2 item does not result in the implementation of any fees. Approval of Task 2 directs agency staff to complete the research and analysis to come up with a fee and funding plan. The plan will not be put into place until all three agency governing bodies, Sutter, Placer, and Roseville authorize implementation at some future action. Also, there's a future Task 3 as part of this MOU that will develop an implementation plan for the Riego Road Baseline Road Widening Project, including project approvals and environmental documents. The hope is that Task 2 will develop the funding to allow Task 3 to occur. So what kind of impact might this new regional fee program have on Roseville's community builders? While I don't have the official answer today, Task 2 will be figuring those details out. We did estimate impacts during Task 1. This potential new regional fee program will likely replace some of our existing fees we currently collect, like the city-county fee currently collected for improvements down along Baseline Road within Placer County and in Roseville, and perhaps the Sparta Tier 2 fee, which is collected to fund construction of the Placer Parkway. Staff did a rough estimation of what the impact would be, assuming some high-level costs and assumptions on community cost-share assignments, and found that the total fee could be about the same as it is now. This is because while we are adding some additional regional improvements to the cost plan, we are sharing all the costs with additional new communities. So we get a better-connected region for what we're paying for a more localized, well-connected Placer County. So to summarize tonight's item, staff is asking for three things. First, the council authorize an amendment to the existing 2021 MOU between Placer, Sutter, Roseville, and PCTPA, which will authorize the second task, Task 2, in the previously approved MOU, and increase the funding associated with the MOU by $166,000, in addition to the $50,000 previously approved for Task 1, bringing the total MOU value up to $216,000. I think it's important to note that, just like the original Task 1, the cost of Task 2 is being evenly split between Sutter County, Placer County, and Roseville, with each agency contributing $166,000 towards completion of Task 2. Second, the council approve $166,000 budget adjustment from the city-county fee program. And third, the council approve a funding letter with PCTPA pledging up to $166,000 towards Task 2 of the MOU. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
All right. I'll start with Councilwoman Rukucci. Do you have any questions?
I don't think so. You know, I've been watching this area a long time, and like you're going to the next task, and it's good that we're looking at it more of a grander scale.
Councilmember Mendonza.
No questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Councilmember Albert.
Just a quick question on Task 3. What was the date that we hoped we'd start that?
That would be after we complete this Task 2. Right now, we have a high-level study completed for Baseline Road, and we have no way to fund it. It's about $160 million just to four-lane it out to Highway 99. So we need to find a funding source before we can move forward.
Okay, so we don't have an estimated date on that until we get the funding source first?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mayor Bernascony.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the information tonight, Jason.
I'll open it for public comment, and I'll close public comment. And unless there are any additional questions, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
With no further additional questions, at this time, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-064, approving Amendment Number 1 to the Memorandum of Understanding by and between Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. Understanding by and between Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, the County of Placer, the City of Roseville, and the County of Sutter, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville, and adopting Ordinance Number 6617, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2022-23 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. Next, we'll go to Special Requests and Reports and Fiscal Year 2022-23 First Quarter Financial Report and FY 23-24 Budget Development Calendar, my favorite time of the year.
Good evening, Mayor Haldeshelt and city council members. My name is Dennis Kaufman, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, and with me tonight is Scott Pettingell, Assistant Finance Director. Tonight, Scott will present the Fiscal Year 2023 First Quarter Budget Report, and I'll present the Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Development Calendar. We haven't prepared a first-quarter report the last couple of years because there usually isn't a lot of new information to report that early in the fiscal year. But this year, we decided to put together a first-quarter report focused solely on general fund revenues because of concerns about the economy. We'll return to the full format for the rest of the quarterly reports for the rest of the fiscal year that includes the Enterprise Fund and some of the other cities' funds. But for now, I'll ask Scott to present the first-quarter report.
Thank you, Dennis. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This first slide provides an overview of our general fund revenues by revenue type, and this slide compares our amended budget to revenues collected through the first quarter. The amended general fund budget totals $196 million in revenues. The cumulative revenues displayed on this slide represent the revenues collected through the first quarter, which total, I'm sorry, $115.8, I'm sorry, $15.8 million. The last two columns show the remaining balance of revenue to be collected compared to budget, and the percentage received to date, which is at 8% of estimates. The rate of collection of 8% versus the percentage of the year lapsed at 25% is expected and is in line with prior years. This is primarily due to the timing associated with receiving some of our major revenue sources, such as sales tax, which only represents one month of revenues due to state processing times, and property tax, which is received from the county in the third and fourth quarters of the fiscal year. Overall, we're forecasting that revenues will end the year modestly above estimates, and I'll go into more detail about each of these major revenue slides on the upcoming slides. In terms of sales tax, we set our FY 23 budget estimates for Bradley Burns and Measure B between our sales tax consultants' conservative and most likely forecasts, or 74.1 million in Bradley Burns and 28.1 million in Measure B. These estimates are highlighted in green on this slide, and we took this approach because we anticipated some slowing sales tax growth in fiscal year 23. Our sales tax consultant's most recent forecast indicates that Bradley Burns' sales tax revenues will come in 1.3 million below budget at 72.8 million, and coincidentally, Measure B's sales tax revenues will come in at 1.3 million above budget at 29.4 million. This forecast is provided in the top portion of this slide. While consultants' forecast indicates that the 1.3 million shortfall in Bradley Burns will be offset by the 1.3 million surplus in Measure B, we are noticing some signs of slowing growth in sales tax revenues based on the most recent sales tax data that we're receiving from the state. This slowdown is anticipated, is attributed to changing consumer behavior from taxable goods to areas that were constrained to their pandemic, such as services and travel. Also, there continues to be a degree of uncertainty in the economy due to inflation and potential slowdown or recession. We'll continue to monitor sales tax revenue closely, and we will provide an update for you at the next second-quarter report. This next slide provides a bar graph for both our Bradley Burns and Measure B sales tax. The blue bars show the current budget, and the green bars show the current revenue to date, and the gray bars display the updated year-end projection. As mentioned previously, you can see the sales tax revenues are forecasted in the year on target overall as of the first quarter, as indicated by the solid yellow lines, marking the most likely projection, as well as the more optimistic and conservative projections provided by our consultant. Moving on to property tax, our second-largest general fund revenue source. The county's latest information provided to us indicate that property tax will exceed estimates by 1.7 million at 66.1 million compared to our initial estimates of 64.4 million. The continued growth in property tax revenue is attributed to the city's continued development and increasing property tax value, property values. Regarding the hotel tax, or TOT, this revenue stream will exceed estimates by about 1.6 million at 5.6 million compared to our initial estimate of 4 million. These positive results are due to the passage of Measure C in November, which raises tax from 6% to 10% of the rent charge for hotel rooms and short-term rentals. This measure wind effect in January of 2023, so we will rely six months of revenues from this measure in the current fiscal year. We anticipate receiving approximately 2.7 million to 3 million annually in future fiscal years from this measure. Moving on to Parks, Recreation, Library Program and Development revenues. PRL revenues are seasonal due to the timing of their programming, and as of the first quarter, PRL revenues were at 28% of budget, or 1.2 million, compared to the estimate of 4.2 million. We anticipate that PRL revenues will end the year on target at 4.2 million. Development revenues, including building, plan checks, and engineering inspections, have trended above estimates through the first quarter, with building permit revenues and plan check fees at 28%, and engineering inspection fees at 41% of budget. Staff anticipate that these revenues will remain strong through the second quarter, but we anticipate a slowdown in development activity in the last half of the year. Overall, we expect development revenues to end the year in line with forecasted budget of 5.8 million. Lastly, the other revenue categories include state and development reimbursements, business lights taxes, license taxes, passport revenues, and franchise fees. As of the first quarter, revenues are on target at 24% of the budget, or 3.3 million, compared to the budget of 13.6 million. We don't anticipate any significant variances overall in this revenue category, so we expect to end the year on budget. So that concludes my overview of general fund revenues as of the first quarter, and I'm going to hand it back to Dennis to go over the budget development calendar.
Thanks, Scott. So staff have already been working on developing the fiscal year 2024 budget for the last few months. This calendar provides the upcoming milestones and city council presentations, starting with the annual city council priorities workshop that's scheduled for next week. Then, at the end of March, we have the internal meetings with each department, meeting with the city manager to review their proposed department budgets. And then, at the city council meeting on April 19th, we're inviting representatives from the local sales tax oversight committee to provide their report to the city council. And on that same evening, the city's public works director, who you heard from before us, will be providing a presentation on the proposed capital improvement program budget. On May 3rd, we will be giving an update on the city's financial policies, as well as an update on the city's pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities. And then, on May 17th, you'll hear from the directors of the electric department and the environmental utilities department on their proposed budgets. On the May 19th, staff plan to release the proposed budget to the city council and the public for review. On May 30th, we will be holding the city council budget workshop, where you'll hear from each of the departments about their proposed budgets. And then, on June 21st, the budget is scheduled to be adopted by the city council. So we want to encourage the public to participate in this process over the next few months, and by providing this calendar, we hope to encourage participation. So Scott and I are available to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Mendonza, any questions?
Questions, thank you.
Also, woman Rakucci.
Just a comment. I like your calendar. I also like the calendars that you had, the small ones that were portable and easily to hand out to the community, because I think anybody who would like to see where we are with our budget and have any questions, they, there's multiple, multiple times that they could do that. And come, show up, text us, whatever, but they're out there. It's not a secret. It's out here for everybody to see how our city's doing.
Councilman Albert.
So my understanding is, since it's first quarter, we're expecting, if everything was just smooth coming in evenly and not like the sales tax that comes in in chunks, we're looking at like 25% as sort of the average expected. I was noticing the engineering inspection fee was really high for the first quarter, which seemed like we were actually kind of slow then. So I was just curious, you know, do we expect that to stay high like that? Do we expect it to drop off? It just stood out really strong.
We'll ask Mike Eisen to join us.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mike Eisen, your Development Services Director. We had extraordinary development activities, you know, over the last couple of years that carried into the first quarter through the summer. Our typical high periods are between April and October typically, so we see a lot of construction starts in the June-July timeframe. So we had a lot of activity, 24-hour construction in some cases. So we see a lot of revenue coming in in the first quarter, which tapers off as the rains come in. So that's why the first quarter is typically higher.
And then, it'll slow down during the weather?
Typically, in typical years, it'll slow down in the weather, although the last three years, we've seen construction continue year-round. And it, not quite this year because of the rains we've had, but in the past three years, we've seen construction continue through the wet months, what would ordinarily be the wet months that haven't been.
Makes sense. Thank you. Sorry to have you come up and explain that.
Please, Mayor Bernasconi.
Just, this is just really well done. I appreciate the update, and we know that building a budget is something that we do all year long, and it's one of the most important things, I think, that we do as a council, too. So, thank you for this.
Well said. So we've put up two digital signboards. Was that, is that in the other revenue in that slide?
Yes, it is.
How are those doing?
They're doing very well. We collected the signing bonus that we got in the first year, and so to date, we're about $730,000 of revenue in the general fund.
What do we anticipate the revenue to be?
For next year, after the signing bonus, which is a one-time thing, it'll be about $575,000 in next year's budget for the general fund.
Okay. All right, great. And I should have done my own homework, but I think people appreciate that you budget conservatively. And if we were, if we went way back machine to last year at this time, how would these first quarter, well, we didn't do first quarter last year, did we?
That's correct. We did not.
So we would have, we would have no benchmark against what the prediction was, and things are unpredictable. Okay, thanks. I'm going to open it up for public comment, and I'm going to close public comment unless there's any other additional questions about the presentation. This is an information-only item and doesn't require any action, and thank you very much for your report. Next, we'll go to a public hearing on North Central Specific Plan Parcel 42A 572 Gibson Drive, Shea Properties Apartment Rezone Project. I'm going to open the public hearing now.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Mike Eisen, again, your Development Services Director. With me is Greg Bitter, your Planning Manager, and who couldn't be with us tonight is Scarlett Marr, who is the project planner on the project. She fell ill and isn't able to join us tonight, so you get the two of us. We'll back clean up. The item that you're hearing tonight is a request to change land use and zoning of a parcel in the North Central Roseville Specific Plan. It's on Gibson Drive. It's known as the Shea Center. It's partially developed as an office park. The remainder of the site has been vacant since the plan was adopted in the early '90s. If you remember, when we were preparing the housing element and brought that forward to council for adoption, we identified the Shea Center, or this parcel in particular, as one of the opportunity sites as part of our voluntary rezone program, which the council directed us to pursue the voluntary rezone program in order to meet our RENA deficit rather than force rezones on unwilling property owners. So we have a willing property owner in this case. This will help us significantly reduce our RENA deficit, and Greg is going to give the presentation, and then we're both available to answer questions.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor Haldeshelt, members of the city council. So as you see on the screen, the project site is located within the North Central Roseville Specific Plan area. The site is bordered by Highway 65 to the north, the Shea Center Business Park to the south, an office, or excuse me, to the east, an office complex to the west, and Gibson Drive to the south. The site has a current general plan land use designation of business professional and a zoning designation of business professional with a specific plan overlay. And at this time, the applicant is requesting the legislative entitlements to facilitate the eventual construction of a 360-unit affordable multifamily apartment complex. So the project entitlements before you tonight include a general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment, a rezone, and a development agreement. Next slide, yeah. So with this application, the general plan land use for the project site is proposed to be amended from business professional to high-density residential, and the project is proposed to be rezoned from business professional with a specific plan overlay to multifamily housing with a specific plan overlay. So along with the general plan and the specific plan amendments, the application includes several amendments to the North Central Roseville Specific Plan, including the division of the project parcel into parcels 42A and 42C, the addition of the 360 units to the plan area, revision to the land use summary table and land use by parcel table. There are certain special policies specific to parcel 42C that are included in the text amendment. And I'd like to point out that while we have the opportunity tonight with the specific plan amendment, staff has been looking at adding some new uses into the specific plan, and so we're proposing to add the community care facility land use type and the, it's not on the slide, I apologize, the long-term care facility land use type into the community commercial and business professional land use designations. And I'll point out that adding these two use land use types is consistent with what the current zoning ordinance allows for these zones. So we're just bringing the North Central Roseville Specific Plan into compliance with the zoning ordinance. So the overall project review has included an analysis of the project's consistency with a variety of city policies, particularly the housing element policies and the city's guideline for conversion of non-residential land uses. And I know Mike pointed out some of the issues related to the RENA, but we know that the 2021 Housing Element Update concluded that the city had a deficit of affordable housing units necessary to comply with its regional housing needs assess allocation. So as a result of the deficit, the council approved several implementation measures and programs, and one of these strategies was the identification of opportunity sites that would be good candidates for the conversion of land use from non-residential to residential uses. At the conclusion of the workshops and hearings for the housing element, it's important to note that this particular project site was identified as a prime opportunity site for the conversion to affordable housing. So again, Mike mentioned this, I'm reiterating, consistent with the council's direction to not pursue the forced rezone, the applicant wants to take advantage of this voluntary rezone program, and that's why we have the project before us tonight. So in addition to the housing policies that we have on the books, the project was evaluated against the adopted guidelines for conversion of non-residential land uses. As I, as I'll describe in the next slide, there are going to be two potential development scenarios associated with the project. In both cases, affordable housing and public benefits will be provided, and in addition, all typical development impact fees associated with multifamily projects will continue to apply, as well as the annexation of this project site into the city's Community Facilities District Number 3, which provides funding for municipal services. So in our evaluation, staff and the planning commission concluded that the proposed change in land use complies with the guidelines for conversion to non-residential land uses. So we can go to the next slide. So the final entitlement associated with the project is a development agreement between the city and the developer. The development agreement is attached as Exhibit E in your council communication, and a list of the most pertinent terms on the DA are listed on this slide. Again, as I mentioned, there are two different development scenarios that can occur on the site, the first one being a 100% affordable housing project, and the second one being a mixed-income self-financed project. So the DA requires the applicant to pursue a 100% affordable housing project and requires the applicant to make as many applications for affordable housing financing as reasonable by the end of 2024, with no less than three applications for the various tax credits or housing, affordable housing bond allocation programs that are offered. In the event the applicant isn't successful in procuring affordable housing financing, the development agreement allows the self-finance project. This project requires the developer to build a multifamily project with a minimum of 20% of the units for affordable housing, and the payment of a public benefit fee for all of the market-rate units that will be developed. So finally, final term, consistent with the specific plan, the developer will be required to complete or construct the portion of the pedestrian and bicycle trail along Highway 65, the northern portion of the project site, and make connections from this project site to the to the, that future bike trail. So in order to comply with SEQA, an addendum to the 2035 General Plan Environmental Impact Report and 2021 Housing Element Addendum was prepared. This analyzed potential impacts associated with the project and concluded that there's no significant impacts associated with this land use change. It's important to point out that, again, we've mentioned several times that this voluntary rezone is consistent with the housing element policies. This land use change was also in anticipation of the potential for this. It was evaluated in the addendum for the housing element. So we've, we've evaluated this change twice now. And so the project is within the scope of the general plan build-out and is consistent with the scope of the rezone program in the housing element. So on January 12th, the Planning Commission considered this project. There was no public testimony, and at the conclusion of the hearing, the Planning Commission recommended that the City Council consider the addendum and approve the legislative entitlements associated with the project. Early notification of the project was posted on the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhoods website. The necessary public notices were prepared, 300-foot notice to all property owners. A notice was published in the Roseville Press Tribune, and to date, no comments have been received on the project. So in conclusion, the Planning Commission, through their deliberation, determined that the project is consistent with the general plan, including the housing element implementation measures, the zoning ordinance, the specific plan, and the city's adopted guidelines for the conversion of non-residential land uses. And all of the required findings of fact can be made for the rezone and the development agreement. So based on all of this information presented tonight and the evaluation in the council communication, the Planning Commission is recommending that the City Council take the actions listed on this slide and approve the project, and that concludes my presentation. Mike and I are here for any questions.
Does council have any questions of staff about their presentation? Councilman Albert.
So the option between, if they can get the loan, they go 100% affordable. If they can't, they have to self-fund with a 20% affordable. Do we, do we have any idea of the chances of getting the 100%, which obviously would help arena numbers the best?
So we believe at this time, there's a good chance, and I can tell you, one of the, one of the reasons that we came to the conclusion that the two-year, three-application seemed like a good, a good bet for the city is that for any particular project, the more times they apply for the same pots of funding, the likelihood of getting that funding actually goes down. Right now, the developers believe they have the best chance, especially with the additional points they're able to receive from our recent pro-housing designation. So that's a 10-point boost in their applications for tax credits and bond allocations, their location, the proximity to various amenities, you know, the shopping, the Galleria, recreational amenities. They really think that this location is, has a, has a good shot right now. Now, we know that financing affordable housing projects is, is one of the most difficult, tricky things I think anybody can do. And so, you know, I don't know that there's a percentage chance, but we think right now, striking while the iron's hot, that they have a good, a good shot, especially with the state having as much money focusing on housing. I mean, you hear it from us all the time, housing, housing, housing is what the state is telling us we need to make provisions for, and so they're, they're trying to put the money behind that to help.
And if they, if they get that funding, that's enough of a financial incentive for them to do it, as opposed to making more money the other way and kind of half-heartedly going after the application?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, yeah, that's correct. Is that, that, that makes the, that's the, that's the more financially beneficial path for them, is to, is to get those bond allocations or tax credits awards and build the 100% project.
Great, great to hear. Okay.
Anyone else?
Councilwoman Rucucci?
Did you have some? Greg, you know, you mentioned affordable housing. Can you define that? Because I know people who are watching us tonight, I mean, they hear Section 8 housing, workforce housing, this kind of housing. What?
Sure.
What does that mean when they're watching us on TV and say this might come?
Yeah. So when we, when we talk about affordable housing, we're talking about certain income thresholds based on the, the area media income. So Placer County has a area media income for, for different household sizes. So for us, affordable housing, and this is based on our housing element, we have three different affordable housing criteria that, that were required to meet by the state. Low income is 80% of area media income, very low income is 50% of area media income, and extremely low is 30% of area media income. Now, I believe right now, a family of four in Placer County is right around $100,000 to $104,000 for the area media income. So if you think about 80%, you're talking about $80,000, $81,000 for a family of four would meet the low income level. And then, say, $52,000 would be the very low income level. In this particular project, the 100% affordable, as you look in the development agreement, it goes into a lot more detail about, about how they're going to apply. But what the, what the applicant is looking at is they're trying to hit an average, because they think this is the best chance for them to get financing, is an average of the units having 60% of AMI. So there'll be some at 80%, there'll be some at 50, they'll have, they'll have a mix in all those different income ranges, but they're trying to hit that target of 60% because that's a sweet spot for, for funding. And I think that, I know the applicants are here, and if I got something wrong, I hope they correct me.
And if, you know, if this is very successful, and it comes to be, then if someone was interested, then they would check to see if they, they apply or it would work with their?
Absolutely. So if, if they, if they are successful in getting the 100%, well, either way, they're going, they're going to be entering into a, a housing agreement. So this project would be coming back through you from, from the Housing Division with a housing agreement, where it locks in the very fine details of the different affordability levels that are going to be offered by the units. And then our Housing Division will help the applicant, you know, find eligible families who meet the income criteria to live here.
Yeah, because I think a lot of people who might be listening or, or hear, hear it because somebody else saw us tonight would be very interested to see, you know, that there's opportunities out there that they might be eligible for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bernascony.
I think this project and this rezone just shows a lot of creativity in a lot of ways, from the landowner being open to it, the staff identifying opportunity sites, voluntary rezone, ways to potentially reach our, get closer to our arena numbers, adding the new land uses on top of it. So it seems like it's a really good fit for that area. Just for context, the other two large complexes on Gibson Drive, I think there's two. Do you know affordable housing numbers? Are there any in there? Are they significant? I don't need exact, but I'm just curious, just for context.
Yeah, I know the Highland Park Apartments, which is at the distal end of Gibson Drive, closer than the north end of Gibson Drive, is 100% affordable. I'm not sure about the terraces next door or the Highland Park Apartments. That's a 400-unit project that I don't believe has an affordability complex. Hopefully, my wife isn't watching. She's probably yelling at the TV right now, but I know, I know of at least Highland Park Apartments is 100%.
I did not realize that. Okay. Yeah. All right. Good. Thank you for this.
Highland Park, excuse me.
I know, on the, on the very north side there.
It's the one on, on Pleasant Grove at East Roseville Parkway, right?
Yeah, it spans between Gibson and Roseville Park, or Pleasant Grove. Yep.
Councilmember Mendonza.
No comments. Thank you.
So you, you looked at a lot of things. Did the Planning Commission consider traffic trip generation for the business professional use versus this use? Talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So I would say that as far as the trip generation goes, the, the opportunity sites that were identified when the housing element update was done back in 2021, that, that environmental review looked at all of the potential impacts associated with, with these land use changes. And so, so that has been looked at twice, again, with the housing element addendum for the general plan EIR and with this project, which is consistent with what we looked at in 2021. So, yeah, there are no, there are, the, the traffic circulation network is set up to handle the, the trips, you know, the, and I don't think there's really a big difference in, in peak hour trips, to be honest.
The residential peak, or the trip production is lower than office park.
Yeah.
That's great, and probably spread out a little bit more.
Throughout the day.
Right. Yeah, because that, I don't know which end of it. You've said distal. I don't know. Did I hear distal?
You heard distal. That's correct.
Medical terms for housing. I don't know anything about that. But on that one end, closer to Pleasant Grove, where that, that interface, you know, can get pretty challenging at times. In fact, the more congested it is, probably the safer it is, so.
Had the office park developed, we would have seen a higher PM peak hour generation than we will with, with the apartment project, for sure.
Quick question on the pedestrian and bike. I know by Villa, there's a stub for there, and then I think at the other end, so it would connect both of those. And then, if I remember a conversation the city manager and I had a couple of years ago, isn't there a flyover that's anticipated over 65 at some point in time?
I could, there, Mayor Haldashelt, yes, there was a concept discussed, but that's, that's really as far as it ever got.
So they wouldn't connect to the concept?
No. That map, $50 million, and I'll build it for you, but.
Bridge, so there's, these are two separate bridges. One, it was the concept going over the freeway. The bridge that you're referring to would be going over more north-south to Galleria, connecting the Villa site. That one's probably has a higher probability.
I thought there was a concept going over 65 to connect Costco and, and the Villa site.
That's correct. That's the one that was, is more of concept.
All right. Concept. All right. I'm going to open it up for public hearing, and I'm going to ask the applicant if they'd like to add anything to, to what they heard from council's presentation or staff's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, staff, my name's Jeff Melrose. I'm part of the development team for Shea Properties. Been involved in this project, this property, since we purchased it back in 2002. At the time, an office park seemed like a good idea, and in 2008, it became less of an appealing idea. And today, it's not even on life support as far as, far as office, for obvious reasons. But it did seem like the right opportunity to get creative and work with the city on solving another problem. And that's, you know, as you know, in the, the housing element talks about the arena assignment or challenge of 12,000 housing units, of which over half of those, 6,000 or so, need to speak to some level of affordability, you know? And that's, that's not an easy thing to do. That's, that's a pretty tall order. But here, with, you know, 357 or so units, all subsidized, affordable housing opportunities, it'll put, you know, a sizable dent in that problem, and I think show state of California that Roseville's serious about trying to solve the problem. The limiting factor really is, you know, the amount of funds available to fund these projects. I think if you did the math of all of the arena impositions on various communities and the amount of funds available, how is that equation ever going to work? So it's a very competitive environment, competing for affordable housing funds. As Greg alluded to, we do think we have a pretty good shot with this project because of its location, because of nature, because of it's a large project. And, you know, the only way you find out is you get in the arena and you take your swings. So we're preparing currently to put forth our first application here. The SIDLAC deadline is, I think, May the 23rd, and the pot of funds we're chasing requires us to go to CALFHA with our application in March. So we're in, in it. We're in the process. You know, it's an interesting thing. They, if they award you the funds, you have six months to use it or lose it, and that means that at the end of that six-month period, you have to have, you know, permits basically in your hand. Be ready. So you need a city staff that's dedicated to making that a priority. You need a developer who can work with consultants to get design documents done quickly. But you really have to start before you even know if you're going to be successful, and that's the big, the big trick. That's the big kicker, you know? We'll be into this well beyond $2 million before we even know if we have funding, you know, that's going to come our way or not. But that's, that's how it works. You put your big boy pants on, and you get in, you play. So we're in it together. It's a team effort, and we really appreciate what staff has done to help us tee this up. It's, it's quite cumbersome and complicated, and I think we've, we've gained a lot of ground in a short period of time. And, you know, hopefully here by August, we'll know if we've secured funding in this, this first effort in 2023. And if we don't, we go to bat again next year and seek all the opportunities that are available. The 80-20 deal, Councilman Albert, you alluded, well, how do we know these guys are really going to make an effort to do this? There's other ways you could do an 80-20 project, you know, roads you really don't want to go down. There's state laws and things that are on the side of, of housing development, you know, if, if you are offering affordability levels of 20% or more. But that's not our ambition, you know? We're, we're here to, to deliver 100% affordable project in the mixed-income pool if, if we can find a way to navigate our way through the process. And it's, it is quite a process, and the rules change almost monthly sometimes. So happy to entertain any questions that you might have, and I appreciate your, your interest in this and hope that you'll support the staff recommendations. Thank you.
Very simple question. So the property is from where that lighthouse, the Shea Lighthouse, I call it?
Yeah.
Down the terrace to land and into that area.
Yeah, from the creek up to where the limits of the existing office park is. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
How long does the affordability last?
I think it's a tale of about 55 years, isn't it, Greg? It's an obligation to, to operate it in that capacity for 55 years. Yeah. So I have to worry about it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions to the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have public comment? We'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. If there aren't any, any additional questions about the presentation, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion. I have to close the public hearing, yeah. Yeah, there it is. Close public hearing. I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the motion.
Mr. Mayor, with that, the City Council will consider the addendum to, to, I'm sorry, to the 2035 General Plan Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, also described as SCH 2019-080418, certified on August 5, 2020, and the 2021 Housing Element Addendum, and consider adopting Resolution Number 23-061, amending the general plan to change the general plan land use designation on certain real property in the city of Roseville. And also consider adopting Resolution Number 22-062, amending the general plan to change the land use designation on certain real property in the city of Roseville. And also consider adopting the two findings of fact and introduce for first reading and ordinance of the council of the city of Roseville, changing the zoning of certain real property located within the city of Roseville, and consider adopting the five findings of fact and introduce for a first reading and ordinance of the council of the city of Roseville, adopting the development agreement by and between the city of Roseville and the Roseville Land Holdings LLC, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci. And Mayor Haldashelt.
Yeah.
Wish it passes unanimously.
All right. This will be the second opportunity for a public comment this evening on non-agenda items. Anyone? Anyone? Okay. The city manager or the city attorney, if they have anything to report this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Reports, Mayor.
All right, great. So I will, starting with Councilwoman Rucucci, invite you to make any comments on the activities you've been involved in.
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mayor. One is in, here in February, we had Capitol Day in Sacramento. CMUA, California Municipal Utility, helped with the presentation along with Northern California Power Association, and what that meant is, it was a day for Mayor Haldashelt and myself and many of our, our water and electric team going to Sacramento and being able to, for the, one of the very first times, which was very exciting, hear presentations there at the hotel. But then we were able to go to Assemblyman Patterson's office and Senator Nilo's office. And I know it sounds like not a big deal, but for many years, we haven't, it's been a big deal. We haven't not really had any physical contact. So you can go to their offices, what you'll know What, what you'll know is it's been, they're working on the Sacramento, the state capital, and so it's under renovation and, and so they're in a, at another section, but they are accessible and so, so is their staff. And so it was very good to really be able to do something we used to, I wouldn't say take it for granted that you had that contact. Now we're, we're back and doing it. And so having, when you saw Senator Nielsen here and, and she's reminded me of, excuse me, the many times that we had, were able to do it in the past. But, you know, it's, it's back again, and our representatives are very happy to hear us and see us and all the rest of the utilities that was all over California that were, that were there to be able to be there at the site. And I think that's the last thing I'm going to say because I'm losing my voice. Go ahead.
Councilmember Mendonza?
One of my council assignments is LAFCO, and they met last Wednesday, and there was nothing related to Roseville to report out at that particular meeting. I did want to just say two things unrelated to my council assignments. One is I wanted to thank the city work crews who have been working diligently since the last, over the last couple of weeks, on the aftermath of the storms that came through here at the end of last month. We had several large downed trees along Rocky Ridge and Douglas that had fallen and had done substantial damage to retaining walls and just were, were very large tasks. Looks like they completed that earlier this week, and they just, they're out there every day, and they just did an amazing job. And just want to commend them and thank them for, for their diligence in getting that cleaned up as quickly as possible. And then just wanted to give a shout out. We've got two new restaurants that opened up, one along the Sunrise Corridor. It's the Denny's. It had a large fire towards the end of last year before the holidays. It has reopened. It's one of our only Denny's still left here in the Roseville area. I know a lot of people were worried if that was going to reopen. And the other one is in the place where the old Sizzler used to be on Douglas Boulevard, a Peruvian restaurant called La Hua has opened up. They opened up last week. So if you're in the mood for Peruvian food, go give them a visit. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Albert?
Yeah, we had, some of us attended the venue out at the casino, and it's a brand-new indoor concert hall, holds 4,500 people. I think it cost around $100 million to build, and they're going to make that up in the first few concerts, according to the ticket prices, it sounds like. But it's a beautiful hall. It's, it's very high-tech, and it's really exciting. Even though it's on Indian Reservation, it's actually going to be a boost for the economics of the whole region because that's a lot of hotel stays. It's a lot of people going to restaurants. It's unfortunately a lot of traffic right before and after a concert on 65 and 80, so hopefully we can get those fixed. But the economic viability of it will be beneficial to our city and our surrounding region. So I think we're all excited about that from that perspective. The, Roseville now holds the chair seat at the Western Placer Waste Management Authority, and they have a real interesting pitch contest coming up where they're actually looking for entrepreneurial ideas on how to use some of the recyclables or some, some of the items coming out of the landfill. And so if you know anybody that's got some really cool ideas, contact the Western Placer Waste Management Authority. And WATMA is what we call it, so I always got to talk that out a little bit. It would be kind of neat to get some, some cool entrepreneurial businesses started there, and they're actually going to give you a place to do it on-site there. So I also got to attend a thing called the Million Cups, and it was across the street at the Venture Lab, the Roseville Venture Lab, and had a couple entrepreneurial startup businesses giving pitches and practicing talking in front of a group, allowing people to ask questions and, and kind of help them. And it's, it's a pretty neat concept to have this in our downtown area. Our city's been so wonderful the last couple of years, have really tried to encourage startup businesses to blossom and start growing here because, yeah, out of dozens, we're hoping to get a couple that'll actually take root and really grow and, and help us. And so it's nice to be, from a city perspective, to help incubate those new businesses and give them a lot of love as they start out. So that's all I have to report.
Vice Mayor Bernascony?
Just to tie on to what Scott was saying about the venue yesterday and what an incredible investment the tribe has made in our community, I think that ties in nicely with our transportation funding agenda item tonight. And they're really, the tribe has really stepped up to the table, trying to help that Plaza Parkway come to fruition. So I want to just recognize their efforts there. Pauline and I had an opportunity last week to head down to Sacramento Chamber, which advocates for six-county region. We were invited as newly elected, re-elected representatives, and we were able to, it was just a reception, just an hour-long reception, but we were able to see their regional elected folks that we haven't seen in, in a long time and able to meet new ones. I understand that today is School Resource Officer Day, and I know we've got at least two officers in the back, I don't think, are school resource officers. But I just wanted to acknowledge the work that they do every day for our more than 10,000 teenagers in our community. And I'm looking forward to next Tuesday. We'll all spend the day together at our council workshop kind of strategy session. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I want to thank the council. We, we had a little extended time with Senator Nielsen, but I think we were all inspired by that. So thank you for, for allowing that space this evening. Keeping the transportation theme, I'm the vice chair of the Capitol Quarter Joint Powers Authority, and we, I didn't take the train to the meeting in, in Oakland today, but we did hear about how ridership has increased significantly. And some of it has to do with this football team down at Levi Stadium, the 49ers. So a lot of great, exciting news on the agenda there with respect to funding for what's known as the Third Track, that'll increase commuter rail from Roseville to Sacramento and accelerate, actually accelerating the second phase and the design phase. So that was on the agenda today, and that funding went through. And earlier in January, we received $30 million also for that. Tomorrow, I'll be downtown, Secog Board of Directors, and we'll be talking about, again, transportation funding, especially the relationship between Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, Eldorado, and Secog, given that the Federal Highway Administration has found a footnote in an agreement that we've had for many decades and decided to, you know, make sure that all the money goes through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, in which in this case is Secog. You know, like all of my colleagues, I was impressed by the venue. I, I'm looking forward to a new venture, and maybe the Venture Lab across the street can help with this, but I saw a photograph of something called Rockstar Barbecue. Did I see that? A collaboration between a Lincoln Chamber and, and a Roseville City Council member who are in the barbecue business. So that was, that was really interesting.
More to come.
More to come. Okay. And, you know, Councilman Albert, I'll, I'll sit in traffic all day long versus sitting on hot metal benches in triple-degree temperature, watching Richard Marx or Air Supply or any of those. So last thing, I had an opportunity last Saturday to join a number of groups who were doing a creek cleanup in Lincoln Estates along the Dry Creek, co-sponsored by the city, and the Dry Creek Conservancy. And there's another one coming up in March. So for those who want to join us, and look forward to being with you again next Tuesday, as, as Vice Mayor Bernascony said, to go through our annual strategy and priorities. Unless there's anything else, we're adjourned until that time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.